I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. It's meeting 1808. And it's 6:30 PM. We have our forum with all our regular members present. Welcome, Joe. We're very happy to have you join us.
Happy to be here.
And now that we have lost our chair, and have a new member, we can elect a new chair. So.
Oh, I thought it automatically goes to you.
I don't think so.
Does it work that way? Like, it's like the president?
I nominate him as our chairman.
I second.
If it says this is an order.
So we have a nomination that I fill in as chair. And a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You got the ball.
Now we need a vice chair.
I nominate Mike Kolski.
I second.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second for Vice Chair Mike Kolski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So he's secretary now, so he has to be.
Now we need a secretary.
I nominate Jim Thurs.
He's secretary.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination for secretary. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye. I started out as secretary a long time ago.
You are again? Um. Do we have any added agenda? Do we have any legal notice?
For the upcoming, we've got referral letters to Crouch. Although we can skip any, which is why there's that.
Okay. The legal notices, public participation. We have no public visiting in the room, but we have public visiting through Zoom. So is there anybody from the public who would like to say something to the commission? Or talk about something that is not listed on the agenda?
Elliot and I would just like to wish Ann good luck in her new role as chair. And Joe, Joe is a new member of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Elliot.
Welcome.
I haven't talked yet. What's my real name, Elliot?
Elliot.
Uh? Who am I, Elliot?
Oh, he's muted. So he says something bad.
He calls me JoJo.
Oh. How old was Elliot?
Three, I think.
Oh, okay.
My.
Younger grandson, so he's not quite three yet.
Speech is really good. Um. Minutes, we'll go there next. Yes, I assume no other public participation? Any else? No, okay, then we'll move on to approval of minutes. Anyone have anything? Respect to the minutes?
I read the minutes and I'm satisfied with what is written.
I noticed one typo. On page five. Second bullet. The third line. It says T A T, and we changed it to that. We can insert the H in there. Any other edits? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes with that minor edit?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of regular meeting 1807 with the alteration on page five. Remaining as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second. Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
All abstain.
Okay.
That was.
That brings us to receipt of applications. We have an application PZ 2021 dash 24 for a special use permit at 17 Thompson Road to allow outdoor live entertainment and outdoor alcohol consumption. We can't take that up tonight because it hasn't been through its notice receivables yet.
So this is just, yep, just to be received and will schedule a public hearing.
Now, I have a quick question. Do we receive a sketch with it and the layout? Or we don't care where the, where they're setting the band up and any of that?
Yeah, so all the application materials we'll give you when he presents.
Oh.
Public hearing, I just give you the application so you know what you're about to get.
For next week. For next week.
Now, this wasn't something that was allowing with the COVID, the outdoor dining?
This, there was, there were some previous approvals that were granted with conditions that if certain things happen, they come back. So part of that was the extension of the liquor permit to allow the consumption outside and then the entertainment. So they're not really doing outdoor dining. So parts of it may, but they're a little bit greater than what the executive orders allow. And he wants to do it permanently. So for him, Yuri has approval for the 10. It's better to do it so that you can, I imagine.
Because I, I thought I heard that some of that outdoor dining was going to become permanent after this district.
Yeah, so one of the things that, one of the legislative changes is that towns have, we'd like to talk about last thing, allow it as a right, which means they still have to come to you. We just can't require a public hearing. So we're trying to memorialize all of this, we can do this liquor control application. All those. Okay.
Next on the agenda is performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, road exceptions. Do we have anything in that category? We do not have any continued public hearings. New public hearings. We don't have any old business. So that brings us to new business. And there we have, um. Proposed text changes to section 406 and 407. I think we can take them together. Because to me, it's one regulation. Um, Mike, do you want to explain?
So recognizing that we had a law in the agenda, I started by taking what I consider to be two of the least controversial adjustments to the regs that are required based on the legislative changes. The first one is section 406, which is our, currently our, our living area requirements, which deals with how big a dwelling unit can be or needs to be, rather, based on our regulations. I apologize if track changes are complicated, but Word doesn't let us print a simple markup, so I have to do it both ways. So you should have a clean version, which basically is, it approved exactly as I wrote it, suggested.
The black.
Black and white is, is my proposal. It incorporates the modifications, the additions and deletions. And then the red version is the track changes. There are only two ways that we're going to let us go or print it. So I'm proposing to make a change to 406, or suggesting to consider a change to 406, which is essentially eliminating the minimum unit sizes that are there now to be in line with the legislative changes. But basically, just make sure that it complies with all minimum standards of any applicable building, housing, or health code. That is what the statute says. So if there's a housing code that says it's, a unit has to be X number of square feet, and they'll have to comply with that, but we're not going to have a separate set of standards. So that's 406.
So how are we going to know if somebody's in compliance with what may come before us?
Well, that won't be, we won't judge the compliance. It'll be through the, their building permit application or if they're a multifamily, any, anything with North Central related to review of septic. So we're, we're just sort of pointing them to those applicable codes, but we wouldn't verify compliance. But this is, this is basically current and this is exact.
So on a letter D, you're still, you're not to exceed 900 square feet, correct?
Oh, uh.
Oh, you jumped. Oh, sorry.
Oh, 407.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can go through that. So anybody has questions on 406?
The one question I have on 406, and this is just from having worked with the state. We were never allowed to adopt a regulation that cites into the future. So the word "as amended", we were never allowed to do by the lawyers because there isn't a public process where people are allowed to consider it.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe it's allowed in town regulations?
I mean, I know many regulations that cite it. The only reason I put it there is because this regulation will have an effective date. And I don't want there to be confusion that we're citing a specific code. So if the health code is updated.
Which we now amend.
It'll be, it'll, you'll have to comply with whatever those standards are, rather than trying to, you know, reference a code based on a specific date that we've created. But I can, absolutely, I mean, I can.
I mean, I would prefer that.
Just with the most recent code or most recent standard or something to that effect, or?
To me, it's nice if you could do as limited because you want to adopt those changes as they happen. But they never let us stay, look. We always had to keep revising our regulations. Very annoying process.
I mean, I could modify it to say standards as set forth in all current and applicable building, housing, and or health codes. And remove that statement. I mean.
That's what you're trying to get to, just the latest and greatest, the most current ones.
That's not a problem.
How's that going to read?
It will say, it'll ultimately read, "No dwelling unit shall be erected or created that does not comply with minimum standards as set forth in all current and applicable building, housing, and or health codes."
Gotcha.
And then we'll strike as amended. Would there be any questions?
Questions on 407?
So, okay, 407. So again, we have to allow accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units as a right, which means we can't require public hearing. I added the term accessory dwelling unit because that's what the language in the statute reads. And so I felt like it was good to have that be consistent.
Do you have to define that term? Because I didn't see it in definitions on the rights.
We define accessory apartments, I think.
Yes.
So, which is why I didn't delete the word accessory apartments altogether, because I wanted it to still track. I can add it to that if you want. But basically, so the things we have to do are, we have to allow them as a right, and we have to allow attached or detached. We can't say how big they have to be, but we can say how, they can't be bigger than a certain amount. So I went through the existing language that we have in place, and I basically kept what I felt was appropriate and not didn't deviate from the statute. So it still requires that they show a floor plan, which demonstrates they have separate cooking, bathing, restroom, and sleeping facilities. And then for detached units or units which will result in expansion of the structure's footprint, a site plan has been provided to demonstrate compliance, it's for a standard. I added a, an ADU with a maximum of one bedroom shall be allowed per pro, which means they're not going to build a two or three bedroom accessory dwelling unit out in the backyard. There's room for discussion on that, if you guys have thoughts.
And you can only have one single accessory unit per house? Or can you have?
Yes, so I'm, yes, I'm saying you can only have one ADU, and that ADU will have one bed. That's how I wrote it. We can tweak that if you want to be more flexible.
Well, I'm trying to see how this now applies to these tiny houses. You know, we're talking 800 or even smaller, I think some of these things are.
Right, so an accessory dwelling.
200 square feet.
It would still, it's still going to be inherently tied to the house. So it'll be connected to the same septic system, you know, and still has to function accessory too. But for all intents and purposes, if somebody wanted to drop a tiny house.
Because those are usually standard, they have like reservoir tanks and pumping hall.
Like a trailer.
But yeah, it makes it a great gambler.
You have, you can't have it both ways in the sense of, if you want to have a tiny house and you want to be living there temporarily, and you want to be pumping into a tank, that's fine, I think, for the health code, but you can't live there permanently and pump into a tank.
I, I think, if I, if I remember right, I think the town has a minimum standard. A house has to be 1,200 square feet. Nothing smaller than 1,200 square feet can be, can be constructed in the county.
Well, I think that's what, this is going to change this.
That's what, well, yeah, and so.
Well, if, if the house exists, less than 1,200, it must be predate.
Yeah, but, okay.
Predate that. So if you have a house that's 800.
But now, now you have the kid that comes back from school instead of living in the basement. He wants to put a tiny house in the backyard and live in there instead.
But the house had to be at least 1,200.
The, the main house is, yeah, this is for an accessory dwelling now. So now you can put one of these tool sheds in the backyard, and the, and the kid's going to live in the tool shed?
Well, if it's attached.
No, it doesn't have to be attached, of course.
That's true.
So that's kind of what I'm wondering.
If he lives in a basement and doesn't have any minimum standard.
Right, right. But I'm saying this could be another thing that could come before us now is instead of, you know, having, having the, the adult child living in the house, they're, they're now putting in a tiny house in the backyard, and that's where he's living.
But how can they tie into a septic system that is designed for a three bedroom house?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is a tiny house is don't, so they use a pumping hall.
Or they have to.
So here's, so it doesn't say here that they have the tiny.
Right, so here's what we can do. We can beef up our apartment, accessory apartment definition to include language to make it clear that an accessory dwelling unit is not something located on wheels or, or constructed for temporary habitation, right? So an RV or something like that would not qualify. The language that was also added says that for the purposes of a health department review, adding a single bedroom via an ADU does not trigger an entirely new need to show code compliance septic area in the whole nine yards. So that.
You can only, like, the size of your septic determines how many bedrooms you're allowed in the house. So if you're adding a bedroom, wouldn't you, and you're already at the max.
Yeah.
As the house is old, you'd have to expand the septic.
My understanding is that you can usually go up one bedroom with what you have. But.
I don't think.
No, I don't think you can. I don't think North Central will like.
Yeah.
Well, in all the other places that I am, you can usually go up a bedroom without having to expand the, the limits of the system. But there was, the long and short of it is, from the health department side, there were, there was language added that specifically created a carve out for an accessory dwelling unit. Because generally speaking, two units.
Statute of the road bill.
Because two units pumping to the same system are a community system, which requires, I think, a state level of review. So they created something that basically says, in the case of an accessory dwelling unit using the same septic system, is not triggering those additional layers of review.
So a loophole or run up to is people can also say the bedroom in the house is not an office.
Well, no, because they would have, because it would be based on, if the housing, building, or health code said it's better, it's better.
Okay, so predate.
Regardless, regardless of what the use is.
Right, so if it's got a door and a window in the closet, it's a bedroom.
Okay.
So the health department and likely building official would catch that. And that's why we're, we're going to require the board.
I, one problem I have, really, the only one is that you excluded that it has to be a blood belt.
Right.
But you can rent it out, too.
Well, you're not supposed to.
Here it is.
You cannot rent it out.
But we have to allow the.
For a period of less than 90 days.
You cannot rent it out, otherwise people, I put one on my house and rented it out for a thousand bucks a month.
Under this, I think you can.
And under the new legislation, you can.
Oh, that's the bubble, yeah, obviously.
Is that right?
Because.
Sure, that.
I am. We now have to allow them as a right.
So every zone now is considered multi-family?
Well, well, again, it's an accessory dwelling. The owner still has to live on the property.
That's correct.
So, so the idea is, if it's accessory two and the owner's on the property, it's not going to become this party house, because you're still living there, you're still the responsible party. But. Well, yeah.
Depends on the age and the kids.
If they can put 10 of them up there, they will, yeah.
Well, that's why the housing code, that's why the building code, that's why create, that's, that's why all these other things are important. And that's why we're limiting the total size.
Yeah.
But this is, this is where we are now. All those.
I mean, our old regulations said, obviously, as you know, I'm sure, you know, you had to have a blood. And every two or three years, you had to come back to the town hall and certify that you did fat. And if they left, you had to take out what, the stove and something else. So it was not considered a.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And that made sense to me. I thought that was great. Because I can, I can envision, I can envision, you know, if I were a tobacco farmer, I, I loved that one. He said, you know, I could have, I helped live it, I could have six of them living in that bottle of a fire.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, it doesn't specifically state anywhere here that they have to hook up to sanitary.
So it'll just be, if there's, based on whatever, because some people have septic, some people have sewer. So they're just being, I mean, the health department will still do those reviews, and they'll have to demonstrate that. But it would be up to them.
One, one last question. What happens if the, if the owner of the home dies? Or gets, unfortunately, they get killed in an auto accident or something? What happens to that person living in the?
Whatever the will says.
Well, I think if they're a tenant, if they have a qualified lease, they're, they're considered to be a tenant under Connecticut law. So they would have to be treated, you know, they'd have to be evicted, or they'd have to be treated that way.
But the new owner of the property under the will would decide.
And they didn't want them.
Then they'd have to evict them. Because, you know, no matter what, I mean, there's, and we're off the wagon, but there's a, there's a, there's something called the Relocation Act, which exists in Connecticut. So for example, if the town goes in and condemns a building that's got four units, fire marshal or building official or health department that says this is not livable, the town shutting that building down makes the town eligible for relocating those parties. And there's a statutory.
Hmm, responsible?
Financially responsible.
Yeah, and all their stuff, too. They take them down to storage, slowly, storage.
And there's a statutory number for the amount of money that the town can expend per person. Put them up in another location. So because they're a tenant, they've got a bona fide right to be there.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea, but it's getting complicated. As compared to what I.
Well, I think the statute is.
Or rules also.
Yeah, and of course.
My biggest fear is.
You're going to wreck track, Mike.
There are a lot of towns actually that do allow accessory dwelling units as a right, and it's not been that big of a surge. Limiting the, to one bedroom and requiring someone to live there, you know, it's not something that's going to generate that much.
Yeah, there won't be a half second to that.
No, a, a number of towns that I work with are very close proximity to UConn. So, you know, in those cases, it may be something. But they generally want to live with a number of people in one bedroom. Not so attractive.
So all the appearance guidelines that we had before, those all have to be stricken also?
Yeah, I mean, I, because they were very subjective, and as zone, as a zoning permit without a public hearing, I can't have a subjective requirement. And the building code, again, when you're talking about connecting to an existing house and pitch of a roof or snow loads and all that stuff, they pretty much are going to get most of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking much more down the detached dwellings. Usually it would be the attached accessory. Try to blend it in so it looks like a part of the original house. But how these detached ones? I see there's a market for a pretty fast, you know, cotton farmers can be selling these things.
In one year.
Yeah. Usually we think of a very clear. I mean. Accessory dwelling unit shall be designed, that's one, shall be designed so that it is of similar architectural as to the existing house.
Too subjective, that one.
Yeah, I mean, basically, if it's, you know, the house is X, dwelling unit has to be X. I mean, if we could think of something that's very concise and measurable.
Worst case scenario, somebody takes a Sealand cargo container and modifies that.
I have a lot of people call about that, and then they usually talk to the building official, and it doesn't, you know, to get it to meet the building code for like insulation and heat loss.
Egress, egress.
And I think I've heard builders will say that they're not really even intended to be subject to the building code. So I don't know, you know, how to issue, how to issue a permit for them, but that's a weird question.
Are there any towns doing this that have clear, say, visual standards of what it looks like?
I haven't seen any yet, because we're all pretty much in the same boat and doing it at the same time. I can look.
And just, I think what people are saying is, they don't want ice words all over the place.
Does it say anything on here where it's got to be located on the property?
It'll still mean, have to mean all the accessory structure regulations.
No sewer system, maybe no.
No front yard, no distance off the property line, it's all that good stuff.
But it sounds, since you struck out, it won't be located so that it's facing the street. That means you could just add another door on the front of your house.
You could. That one I took out because, I mean, we allow multifamily developments in many of our residential zones, which have multiple doors, which is. So, so requiring an internal connection, it, to me, I don't know what that gets you. But if you have an attached accessory apartment, you could. I mean, I think that's probably one that could still fly if you want to throw that one back. It's more of a design constraint than, yes, but.
Well, there's nothing prohibiting it, right? You're just saying, I mean, if somebody's, if somebody's doing it for a family member, they probably would want a, a.
They could do it.
Right, right. But the saying that you have to do it if you're renting it out to somebody entirely.
If it's not 900 square feet, how many doors and windows can you put 900 square feet? And have wall space and. Right? You're only going to have one door and maybe a window.
But don't, or a dwelling, don't you have to have two means of egress?
A window and a doors.
Oh, that house.
Sufficient.
Not two doors.
Yeah, well, windows, big enough, yeah.
Right, so the existing regs prohibited that doorway from facing the road, which I propose to strike. I think we, I think we could probably get away.
What I like about that is you don't get, you know, two front doors. And it doesn't start to look like an apartment. But in some zones, I agree with you, where that would fit, but other ones, it's like adding another door. Depends how it looks.
Yeah, my parents live in a traditional colonial, has a door that we use, and then has a front door, which I don't know if anybody's ever entered the house from.
Yeah, so I have the same.
Are you saying you have two front doors?
Up through the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not suggesting we're, you know, we're scheduled to hear it right now. So we could certainly leave this open and think about it until the next meeting. And I can tweak some of this other language and see what it looks like.
I guess I would be interested in seeing if somebody has figured out the architectural, how you prevent it from being an ice.
Couldn't it simply just say must, must be compliant with the rest of the house, whether it's vinyl sided or shaped?
Yeah, that, yeah.
But sometimes people do part brick and part.
Well, right, yeah, stone, stone front siding on the sides.
Right. Well, remember, we don't regulate how someone constructs a house anyways.
Yeah.
If somebody comes in with a single family home, that's. If somebody comes into a single family home, that's meets the building code, plus the texture one eleven and paint it.
Or, or put pink and yellow siding, they can do it.
So we can't regulate the architectural style of a single family home, so we gotta be careful.
Yeah.
But, but just, I think.
But something that it's consistent with the existing dwelling or something like that.
Yeah.
I think I can work something.
Most people don't all look like crap anyways.
Which, which means whatever. Cause it's gonna be very difficult to say it's not.
All right, under my track, what I did.
Let me see how I can get a little more creative.
Um, anything else under new business? Nothing under other business? That brings us to the business meeting and adult use cannabis led to switch.
So, we've talked about this before. The state passed, obviously, adult use cannabis regulations, which essentially. Towns have a couple of options, they can do nothing and. We have to then allow these establishments and treat them as if they are. Retail or other similar use, essentially, you have a cultivator who's cultivating marijuana. We have to treat them the same way we would treat someone who's cultivating flowers, somebody selling. Marijuana, medical marijuana, or whatever, we have to treat it the same way we would treat Dollar General or another retail store.
Would be treated like liquor.
Well, I'd say it's, it's a controlled substance, so you can't just have an open field, right, that you have a potential of. Youth going in there and stealing.
Yeah, so that, I don't, I don't know that you can grow it in an open field. I think it would need to be, it needs to be grown in a facility.
But can't you grow it at home? There is a number of plants you can have.
Yeah, but this is, so they're talking about commercial.
Okay.
So there are, there are eight, um, there are eight different types of. Licenses which will be issued ultimately by the Department of Consumer Protection. And so it's cultivator, micro cultivator, retailer, hybrid retailer, product manufacturer, food beverage manufacturer. Packager, delivery and transport. So, um, basically, if towns do nothing and someone comes in, we have to treat someone who wants to sell cannabis. Just like we would retail.
Well, control, like I would say like liquor maybe.
Yeah.
No, no, like retail, the law says we have to treat it like retail. If we do nothing.
So you could sell it in the school zone?
Yes.
Next door.
Well, and there are many, many state laws through the Department of Consumer Protection, because these will be licensed at the state level, which will prohibit a whole bunch of things. But at the local level, if retail is allowed in every zone, then the sale of cannabis would be allowed in every zone. If we do nothing, that's what happens, we can adopt regulations to deal with this. The, the state has just basically said, for those of you who don't deal with it, this is how you're gonna have to deal with it. But the town can adopt regulations to restrict where it's allowed, how it's allowed, if you go through that process. So, many towns have basically considered, um, and are working towards a temporary moratorium to prevent. Any of these applications from coming in while they work to develop regulations. I guess the fear is, let's say you have a permitted use where, or zone where it allows this, someone will come in to Ruth and say. I wanna get a zoning permit to put up a sign and establish a retail operation in Bastel Plaza to sell cannabis. So they provide a sign permit, they give a zoning permit, they're good to go, and then they wait a year because they're going through the state process. So they're sort of, don't want any of these things to get in ahead of time before the town's judge should consider. On with the moratorium. The only other thing that I'll say is that through ordinance, a town can prohibit across the.
Right.
Um, and if you guys develop regs which say we want this by special permit. But the town legislative body says we're gonna pass an ordinance which prohibits it, that prohibition would supersede anything that we do here. So, for that.
Because of town, we don't know what the town would.
Yeah, the question is, what are the selectmen thinking?
So if you. Then there's two things to decide, one would be a moratorium, if you want to do a temporary moratorium. Because we don't wanna wait too long, and two, if you're thinking that you're leaning towards an all-out prohibition. Um, I think that the next step would be that I send a letter on behalf of the commission to the board of selectmen saying. We have moratorium, we're considering this, you know, we wanna know what your stance would be, just so that we can have that conversation. I know. Jay's planning on having a joint discussion, wanting to have the board of selectmen and this commission to talk about solar and cannabis.
Good, cause I think we need to talk to them.
Yeah.
Because I can see doing a moratorium so they don't start popping up.
Right.
Next to the school and inappropriate places.
Here's one that could be argued, in the eighty-one, your permitted sale of farm products.
So, the, um, there is.
State regs are probably overrule that.
Well, I'm just curious, is this considered a farm product?
So, I'm gonna, I have it on my call and I'm not, I'm not texting. There was a senate bill in part of twelve oh one, the term agriculture and farming do not include the cultivation of cannabis. Okay, which means if somebody, all the places that we allow farms, farms can now start just growing cannabis, so that part. We're okay with.
But they're gonna wanna retail, they're gonna wanna do a retail outlet, they're gonna wanna be on Route five, one forty. They're, they're just not selling these winter.
Currently permitted in B one, B two, A, the H I F Z. By right, and then you have certain things that are allowed by special use permit in the M ones and the. The T Z five and the B three, so it's pretty much.
I, I, I say we ban it across the border, but the whole town and Enfield deal with it.
No.
No.
Tax base, we need more commercial business. I would not be in it.
I mean, there is some, yeah, I mean.
They're, they're gonna want farms based, I mean, they're gonna wanna put a grow operation somewhere, and they're gonna wanna put a retail operation somewhere. Why do we want Enfield or South Windsor, South Windsor gets everything anyways, they'll end up with it anyways.
So something that's important to know is that there are caps, so for every twenty-five thousand people, you are only allowed one. So the max we will have is one retailer, one cultivator, one transporter, one delivery. So it's, it's not like this will just be everybody trying to come here. That's why this moratorium thing has been for, a lot of towns are pursuing it, because everybody's trying to get to be the first one in each market, right? We've had probably at least five calls to our office or people coming in. Asking questions and interested and people that are familiar with this area but have production facilities in, in mass. The, the.
The growing is done in like a big industrial building, it's not outside growing, they wanna go year round.
The preliminary estimates are that, by the way, there are a hundred and forty-six retail stores in Massachusetts and forty cultivators. For a population of almost seven million, a hundred and twenty-four towns. Ban it, a hundred and eighty-eight towns allow it, but, um, they're suggesting that local tax revenue. For each of these would be in the area of one to two hundred thousand dollars, they're expected to generate about four million dollars in revenue. The application fees.
Retail store or for the big scale operation?
Well, the retail's probably, well.
Cause you, cause it's, you tax the product, I think, I, I, I don't know much.
But would that tax go to the state like sales tax?
Well, we get property taxes. We're going, we'd get equipment taxes, whatever equipment they have.
I, I.
No, I think there's a specific language that says that a portion of that goes back to the town in which it's in.
I think. Mike, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, it's Ruth. I just wanted to share, um, the town can get three percent on the sale. Um, it could potentially go into like social services funding or the like. Uh, the state gets seventeen percent, so it's a total twenty percent tax.
There you go.
So if they decide to build a, go in the industrial park, fill the building and put a big grow operation, and then from here. Distribute it, now we're in between, you know. Right on ninety-one, they'll be able to distribute it. So they don't have to put a grow operation in this, in this town, they don't have to, but wouldn't we want the grow operation with the. Taxes, the square footage, the lighting, the equipment.
Bring back the dull mushroom plant.
Right. You know, I mean, they're self-contained, they may be able to go one forty. With a grow operation in one of the big lots. People are gonna say, what kind of people is it gonna bring to town, but you'd be surprised.
Well, the good news is it's statewide, yeah, so we're not. Yeah, fortunately, I. I have, I have a facility that's right by the, gotta go through Lee to get to where they have a spot right there. And there's lines, lines in there, you know, traffic issues, it's amazing.
I went to one once out of curiosity when I was in Seattle, cause I wanted to see what it was. It was a tiny little store, there weren't a lot of people in it. But they were, um, carting everybody for their ID at the door. And I asked to buy the pictures and they said as long as I didn't photograph any of the people who worked there. But it was incredibly expensive. And it was every kind of candy and baked good and.
All up to price, over eats, doesn't have a delivery, you probably just pick the phone up and. You know, I'm.
But it was in a, I'll say, kind of seedy neighborhood.
The one up there is a converted gas station, there's one.
That's kind of the size, it was like the size of an old gas station.
So they, yeah, they're, they're estimating that the state will outnumber about a hundred fifty retailers. Which will each generate about four billion dollars as annual revenue, which will result in a hundred, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in tax to the town in which it's located. So, the application fees for like the lowest level license I think the state or like two hundred fifty thousand. A cultivator, I think they're close to a million.
Yeah, I heard someplace like a million.
So this is not something that, you can't just establish it overnight, it takes, there's a massive applications to the state.
Yeah.
So, um, I think the only thing that I am looking for from you is if you want me to get on a stick with a more temporary moratorium.
I do.
Um, because I all have to refer, it has to go to O P M, I split across text amendments, I have to refer, so it's a thirty-five day hold. Yeah, and I mean.
Well, what exactly in short form, what does that gain?
It means that we are under, we don't have to approve or consider any applications related to cannabis. For the period of the moratorium.
Which is.
Thirty-five days.
No, we, I mean, most towns you're seeing about four to six months.
Okay.
Which then means during the moratorium, you can discuss with the board of selectmen, you can develop regulations, but nobody can get in ahead of time, try to get their foot in the door.
How about you, Joe?
No, 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 I just, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great business opportunity for the town. But I also don't wanna have a half dozen of them in here, or just saving their spots, to see if they can come in. So I agree, I agree, and we're gonna get one anyways.
But it definitely should be a special use permit, should, you know, it's gotta be something that we can review and we can really.
Not next to the school.
Exactly, you know, that, that, it should be somewhere by right, that is.
And to me, the police should have some say in where to.
So the, the law says that we can reasonably restrict hours, we can restrict signage, we can restrict proximity to religious institutions, schools. Charitable organizations, hospitals, veterans homes, military establishments. Um, so, we have the ability to basically make sure that they're not setting these things up next to schools and other.
So that, that puts, that leans towards special use permit.
Yeah, I mean, we could create, you know, can't be within five hundred feet, and there's certain things, but yeah, I think that we could, we could do that via special use.
But I also think we should in the, where it's appropriate. Place in that discussion, is if people use it, eat it, whatever they do with it.
Right.
Um, and then.
The pro- the problem with appropriate is, appropriate's only in your mind, it might be different in my mind, so if you put down appropriate.
No, but to me, next to the school is.
Well, yeah, that, that you could set by status, and I think the state already does set that by status with liquor and shit.
And, and while it's not written anywhere, there is a strong sense that when they wrote this bill, the intent was for it to be treated in the same manner as.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, so I think the police should be taking a look at too, but we, we, we did the Walmart, we made a big mistake, we approved that Walmart, not talking to the police department. Cause they say they have, Joe, they say more calls to the police department than, I mean, to Walmart than any of the places down. It's huge.
Quite a bit, they're having a lot of problems with the old Ramada and.
Oh.
More, more so.
But the Walmart there, you know, that's one mistake we made, that's kind of a big box store, cause in here we got a.
A sharing point.
Yeah, because, you know, they call us and give, they get a lot. And we never, we never even thought about that, we're, there's ain't no new Walmart, we have to be. Like, okay, it's for Walmart's money.
So, I will, I will, um, prepare a language for moratorium temporarily. Do we want, so do we think six months is good? If we develop regulations, if we can certainly remove it.
Yep.
Um, so I will get that off and referred so that we can get that in the hopper.
Other towns that you work, does that seem to be what's happening?
I just did one today, it's hit or miss, there are some towns that aren't really all that concerned, because if they have. If they're, you know, less than fifty thousand people, you have one or two of these establishments. And that's a feeling it's that, you know, so it's, it seems to be sort of. Yeah. There's one town in Connecticut that, uh, basically has taken the position that because. The federal government has not said that it's, it's, it's allowed, they won't be approving anything and they won't be doing anything. I think they're gonna. I'll get on.
They're going to have across my parents' house and people are coming across the street and stealing the hemp. They don't have marijuana, they're from a side like this, this, that, and eating.
One season, right?
Plants or places are taking, it's not. He didn't carry either, the guy out there, no lights.
So, um, the next one, I'm gonna pull this up so I can. Speak to it if he wants to as well, but, but essentially, we got a really unique situation related to the. The development that was formerly known as South Road, I'm sorry, creative housing. This is very.
With old military housing, right, and the towns took it on for affordable housing.
So the town took it on, um, not because they wanted to. It, the, the nonprofit that ran it went under, and so the town actually took it that way. Um, so essentially, you have all of these properties which are on one piece of property.
Oh, they're not individual lots?
No, so you have all single family ranch townhomes, it's just under four acres total, sixteen single.
When you drive that, it's very well maintained.
So, yeah, well, the town doesn't allow that.
Oh.
It's town road, town across.
You try to buy it more times, you'll never see it, you'll feel it.
Yeah, it's right here.
It's right up.
Yeah.
It's gonna pull it up on the big screen.
Okay.
Yeah, you drive by it more times, you'll never know it's there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I've driven through, just out of curiosity a few times, and usually turn, turn around.
I met down there like once.
Here's the property.
Show them the military, it's on the road. That's right to the cross street.
Southern Auto.
Oh, yeah, so.
Yeah, parking lots.
Yeah.
So, um, here is, uh, here's the development, so. It's one four acre piece, just under four acres, sixteen houses, so roughly four units an acre. Um, they're all individually owned and they pay a fee per month currently to the town. Um, the sewer is run through the backyard, so all these houses discharged out the back of the house to a sewer which drains the property. And ultimately exits. The town has, and they're all income restricted, so there, you can, you've, you've gotta meet, yes, you've gotta meet income limit. Gotta be under a certain income to be eligible. The town is not in the business of being a landlord and it's funded through the process of working with the Department of Housing to lift the income restrictions and have them agree that we will basically divest ourselves. And so what will happen is the lease lines will become property lines and they will then own the land which they're currently effectively leasing. And the money they're currently paying to the town in the form of a homeowners association, for lack of a better word, will then be paid to the town in the form of property tax, it's a net wash essentially.
Then who will take care of in the center of the circle, they have like nicely mowed and.
We're still working on that?
We, well, we will have to maintain the road, there will be a town road and right now currently we maintain the circle. The theory behind the circle is to turn it into a traditional cul-de-sac where it's all paved and it'll be one less thing we have to maintain.
That's a big area of pay.
It is a, and then.
And it's a nice ball field looking kind of.
Yes. The cul-de-sac would shrink, it would just be a 50 foot round cul-de-sac, like a normal sized cul-de-sac.
And then people get bigger front yards.
They would get a little bit more grass to mow and maybe some, some of those driveways are very small. So the people use the cul-de-sac to park their second cars in.
Yeah.
So it would, you know, give them more opportunity to have.
You could cut off the existing road and construct.
Are the three houses on Phelps Road part of it or are they?
They're, they are.
Yes.
And the driveways go to Phelps Road.
And the driveways go to Phelps, there's three on this side and one on the other side. Has the town tried to sell that whole parcel with the houses on it or no? Not even been discussed?
I think that because of the income restrictions and the association issues, I don't think it's ever been unzoned. So the problem we have is we don't have a zoning regulation or a zone or anything which.
That kind of density.
Which would allow for, we had a text amendment a couple of months ago which sought a similar density. But.
Grandmother?
We don't, so the problem is we need to basically be in a position where we can hand these properties off to them so that they're not, not conforming immediately as they get them. Because we have, they have, some of them have pools and sheds and fences and all these other things.
What I was thinking is like downtown warehouse point, you know, you've, you've got about the same density.
Yeah.
They're all non-conforming, so you can't just make it pre-existing non-conforming.
So the problem.
Yeah.
The problem that's. They all try to.
EPR is nice.
Zoom in a little bit more, is, you know, in many of these houses, we have like just a few feet between them. And so if we just drop this in, even using our existing zone.
Yeah, so they're about 15 feet off the property line or any of that.
Right, there would be, there would be no, there would be no. There would be nothing they could do, right? They couldn't put a stoop, they couldn't put an addition, they couldn't put a deck, they couldn't put a shed. And I can't rezone the property. You know, it's gonna have to be a subdivision.
Can we say, can we create a new zone?
Well, we could, but it would be.
Everybody jump, everybody jump all over.
That's the problem, right, we can't create a zone for one property, which means we'd have to let other people.
Yeah.
And so, so you have currently, you know, even with the most dead zones, it's gonna double to quadruple the density somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Lovely the way it is, will be.
Yeah, it's too bad I couldn't say.
So the goal is to leave it exactly how it is, but, but we have to draw those property lines and that's gonna be a 16 lot subdivision. That's, that's, you know, the, the only way to make that happen.
I mean, some will pull someplace.
So I, my, my, my feeling is on the zoning side for the regulations, this is a clear case for a variance application because there is not one piece of property in town which is similar, which is the whole reason variances exist.
Right.
We may run into some more complicated issues related to subdivision breaks. Because this will be a 16 lot subdivision, so we will have streetlights and street trees and open space and driveway standards and roadway standards. And there's certain things that we, you know, we may not be able to.
But it's historic, new housing was built before.
Right. So, you know, I don't want to start recommending that we move in the direction of doing a variance if you guys would prefer to work on some type of overlay or floating type zone or some. But.
Seems right for me.
Yeah.
Because it's history.
I think when you start always including tech zones, you're opening a can of worms, I, I think the variance is the way to go.
So I'll keep you posted on kind of how this.
Mike, there are already streetlights there, the road will be the minimum, I mean, it's 18, right there, that's, that's almost 19 feet.
Yeah.
I, we're not that far off of being able to bring the road to code.
Yeah.
Obviously the sewer, you know, we're working on. But it, it, it's, it's very important that we do this to get the liability of the town off because it costs us over a hundred thousand dollars. They all have external oil tanks, one of them went bad a few years back and we literally, it costs us about a hundred thousand dollars to mediate, remediate the whole thing and.
So.
Because they're all.
Because we own the property.
And they're all on slab.
On slab. Well, actually they're not slabs, they're eight foot full wall foundations, backfilled and then poured slab. The foundations go eight feet in the deep.
Really?
I believe that there might have been fallout shelters in the bottom of where, they were designed somehow, but the foundations go down eight feet.
I'll bet you.
Really, because we've done a lot of work out there and they, you know.
That was a military standing problem.
So then when they, they backfilled it when it was no longer military use.
I know, you know, so some hatch.
Some ordinance.
So it's slammed and made ready to slap.
No, no.
The foundation.
They tried to be foundation, or they slapped, slammed the foundation. Eight foot walls and then there's a slab on the top.
There was no, there was no second floor all the way though.
We don't know, so how do they do that? They, they just poured walls and then.
Oh, they flew with dirt.
We don't, well, yeah, that's what we're assuming, there's dirt in there. Yeah, but all the furnaces, everything is, is, are on closets, it's all, they're, you know, they're, they're, they're very similar inside like, like mobile homes where all your utilities, everything are here or in the attic. Wow.
Whereas the years went by, people then upgrade them and change something.
Well, oh, yeah, there's, there's, you know, a lot of them, some of them have propane, you know, I mean, they're.
Put in the heat pumps.
See, we never even a town own, we had, I know.
Well, they don't own the buildings, they own the.
Yeah. That's why Joe's here.
So we're, we're trying to work through exactly what the smoothest process will be. It seems like probably a variance, but the subdivision stuff is gonna create. It's a complication.
So now, okay, do, every, every one of the residents has to agree to become the landowner now, right?
Yes.
Is there, is there gonna be a purchase out or?
We already had, we had last winter a meeting with all of them and Jay explained everything, Mike Santor from the Department of Housing was there, I'm our, was there explaining everything that needs to happen. But yes, one person chooses not to, does not have. But, but the math, again, they're paying a monthly fee and the property tax that they'll pay now being owners is essentially a wash.
And the property transfer, will there be, they'll be, it's sold for a dollar or something to that effect?
I don't think there'd be a sale cost if we're gonna just transfer the property. They're not, we're not, the town's not asking for any money. And they're gonna have obviously equity.
If you needed to have the dollar for just to hack that it is, so that it's not a gift thing there and they're not a gift tax that gets associated.
No, but the benefit to the property owner is that they now are going to be the owner of a piece of land for zero dollars.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so we're gonna work through the process, there's a lot of something needs to happen, but I wanted to make sure that the approach, you know, makes sense. I don't see how we can straighten it out.
That's no, it's like sort of can't work or really else.
Yeah. That's, that's the main concern is that whatever we do here can't be duplicated somewhere else.
And the reason why this is waiting, we can't, the only zone we would tweak is the MFTD, you have to create something there which obviously has been before you, for the last month, almost a year. So.
Previous old military establishment. Our grandfather did.
Yeah.
Because of military, they had some. So why would they want to pack something?
Sure not.
If they are that, they could be helped.
Trust is across there or something.
It might be a cemetery.
Maybe there was plans to do something eventually, but they're eight foot, you know, we didn't anticipate eight foot walls. I want to drill a hole through the freaking slab.
You were gonna buy one, buy one.
I go free. I think qualified.
Have anything else for the business meeting? Okay, nothing for executive session? I think we're gonna adjourn, somebody would like to make a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourned?
Okay.
I.
All of us in favor?
I.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:00.
Well, I heard nightmares that you guys were here.